Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County. We'd like to call it to order, and this evening Commissioner Turner will lead us in prayer, and then Commissioner Jordan will lead us in the pledge to the elite of the flag.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for a wonderful evening that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for each one of the individuals that are here representing their constituents, Lord. I ask that you be with us tonight as we make these decisions, Lord, and in the coming weeks as we vote, Lord, in a presidential election, thank you for the freedom that we have in this country, Lord, and help us to never take it for granted, and those soldiers who fought in many different wars that have died, to give us that freedom, Lord. Help us to never take that for granted, help us to vote with our conscience, Lord, vote on the issues after doing our own research. Be with those that are here tonight, Lord, be with those families that are watching from home. I ask this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Shireno. 21 present.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, you have before you, I believe, a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, do you have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed those, find them in order, and move that they be approved as mailed.
And a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Did anyone have any corrections, additions that are not noted? There being none, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution of recognition for our Segal High School golf team, and Commissioner Baum will present that.
And let me invite the Segal High School golf team up here. While they're coming up, I'll relay something that happened on Tuesday of this week. I was in a meeting where the dean of the College of Business and the Chair of Accounting were debating whether golf or hunting was better. The Chair of Accounting said golf was better, and the dean of the college said hunting was better, to which the accounting chair replied, "Well, I'm actually a hunter, I just hunt for my golf ball."[208.51][208.51](Laughter). And I'm sure the guys standing behind me don't hunt for their golf ball very often. Whereas the Segal High School golf team recently captured the school's first TSSA class AAA boys' golf state championship, and whereas, in addition, they have achieved the following in 2012: a 53-6 team record, district seven AAA champions, and region four AAA champions. And whereas, the team members are Arjuna Anday, Kiefer Clary, G. Rollins, Thomas Luder, and Kyle Clary. And whereas, this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to all team members, Head Coach Dallas Hill and Principal Jason Bridgman for their dedication and commitment which has made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2012 Segal High School golf team, Coach Hill and Principal Bridgman for their successful year. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Phillips, and others? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, now it's time for public comments, and tonight we have one person that wishes to speak, and that's Mr. Brian Hercules. We're gonna ask him to come forward and tell us who he is, and give us his address, and And Ms. Cunningham is with him.
Mr. Mayor, Staff, and Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening. I want to share with you, my name is Brian Hercules, and I have the privilege of serving as your President and CEO of Your United Way here in this community. And I wanted to share with you, and congratulations, that over the last several years, the Rutherford County Government and School Board have joined together to be one of our top five campaigns. And that's something to give recognition for, and we do appreciate that. I want to talk a little bit about Your United Way. It's in the community impact business. We focus on community investments in the area that we consider to be top shelf for the quality of life. Those are the areas of education, health, income, and rebuilding lives. Your United Way, in the last year, 2011, reached 122,000 people in this community, which is 44 percent of our population. You have a community impact report on your desk this evening that shares some of the traditional investment-type programs that you are used to seeing through Your United Way. I'd like to take just a brief moment to share some non-traditional things that Your United Way are doing to impact this community. One of those is a partnership we have with Family Wise to provide a no-cost prescription discount card to any family within our community, no matter what their income, employed or not employed. This discount equates typically to about a 35 percent reduction in cost of drug prescriptions. Again, costs absolutely nothing for us to employ this program. Last year, we got a report from Family Wise that we had achieved about a $284,000 savings. In the last 12 months, that number has escalated to $625,000 worth of savings reportable back to Rutherford County by your constituents and our friends in this community using that card. Over 9,000 clients use that card, again, being provided at no cost. Those cards are available at any time. If you know someone that could use a card like that, please don't hesitate to have them get in touch with us, or if you have a business or an opportunity to share this information, we can provide cards to you to make available to anyone within your family or your circle of influence that is underinsured or not insured that could use a benefit and prescription discount. Your United Way is focused on the business of community impact, I've said that, for an opportunity for real quality of life changes in our community. We need you to continue your support through the county government and the county schools, and individually. I hope you will consider investing with us as we strive to live in a community that truly lives united. Now, I've asked Terry Cunningham to join me this evening. We have a mantra at Your United Way: "To give, advocate, and volunteer." The county, I've recognized already for your generous giving monetarily, but also for the last three years, Terry Cunningham has been one of the greatest assets and advocates for Your United Way in this community as a volunteer. And Mayor, we want to say thank you for allowing her the privilege to do that, and work with us, and work to make a real impact in the community, and we do appreciate. Now, the second thing she's up here for tonight is to make sure I don't talk very long. So thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak.
Thank you, we appreciate the great job you're doing.[548.66][548.66](Applause). Commissioner Gooch, elections and confirmations.
Steering has several recommendations for your consideration this evening, Commissioners. First, on your desk, you will see a copy of the nullary candidates, and I move for their election, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second, Commissioner Sandlin, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. That's unanimous.
Second, we need to fill two vacancies on the beer board. Steering nominates Mr. Jared Barrett and Mr. Keith Bratcher. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second, Commissioner Farley. All right, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Are there any opposed to that motion carried? Thank you.
Need to fill vacancies on the Audit Committee of the School Board Representative, Road Board Representative, and a citizen-at-large. Steering recommends Mr. Wayne Blair to represent the School Board, Mr. Keith Bratcher to represent the Road Board, and Mr. Steve Stroeder to be a citizen member. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer and others there. Any discussion? All in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Next, we need to fill three vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Steering nominates Mr. Jerry Sartain as a member, and Mr. Jared Barrett and Mr. Michael Rathner as alternates. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Commissioner Jordan, any discussion? All in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Next, we need to confirm the appointment of Judicial Commissioner Mrs. Wanda Watkins. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? All in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed to that? Thank you, that's carried.
To announce vacancies on the Code Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board, we need to announce two alternate vacancies on the beer board, one expiring on October 2013, and one expiring October 2014, and to announce two vacancies on the Insurance Committee, which will be citizen memberships. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Gooch. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business on the agenda. We will start on the reports by the standing committees, and first, there is a purchasing committee, a monthly report, that we need to approve. Motion by Mrs. Cook, do we have a second? Commissioner Black, any discussion or questions? Are it all in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed to that? Thank you. Now Commissioner Ely, we'll be able to start on your Budget Finance and Investment Committee reporting. It would be wonderful if you finished before 6:30, wouldn't it?[741.61][741.61](Laughter).
Item K2A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. General Sessions Court, from unassigned fund balance, $2,800 to data processing services, $2,800. This is to pay two invoices from the '09-10 fiscal year. Fire and rescue, from unassigned fund balance, $85,000, to other equipment, $85,000. This is a cleanup amendment, so that our budget agrees with grant documents. From the Sheriff's Department and Jail, from unassigned fund balance, $33,995. This is to correct evaluations for 11 lieutenant positions. To Sheriff's Department, lieutenants, $17,643, and the related benefits. To Jail, lieutenants, $10,560, and the related benefits. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second. Second, Commissioner Sandlin, did anyone have a question? All right, then, we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K2B, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose DEA Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, asset forfeiture funds, $5,041, to increased expenditures to motor vehicles, $5,041. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner Shireno. Any questions on that? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Item K2C, Education Capital Projects Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Education Capital Projects Fund be amended as follows. Education capital projects, from committed for capital projects, $55,196, to maintenance and repair services buildings, $55,196. This is for plumbing and other associated work for the campus school renovation Phase II project, and that totally completes that project. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan, any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K2D, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Drug Court. Whereas, Rutherford County has been notified of a grant award from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the provision of implementing a highway safety grant for the Rutherford County Drug Court program in the amount of $29,657.50, which requires no matching funds. And whereas, the proceeds of the grant will be used for the purpose of providing funding for the DUI court program. And whereas, the grant contract shall be effective for the period commencing on October 1, 2012, ending on September 30, 2013. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of $29,657.50 for a highway safety grant. A copy of the same being attached here too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item K2E, A Resolution Authorizing a Contribution for the MTSU Science Building Construction. This request has moved through two committees, the Health and Ed Committee and the Budget Committee. The original request was for $1 million. The motion coming from the Health and Ed Committee was to contribute $100,000 this fiscal year, with the understanding that we would look at the request next year to determine the level of contribution. That vote was 5-2 from Health and Ed. The motion from the Budget Committee was to contribute $100,000 this fiscal year, with the understanding that we would look at the funding next year to determine the level of funding. The Budget Committee also recommends that the funding come from the development tax. The vote from the Budget Committee was unanimous, with one member being absent. Whereas, Middle Tennessee State University is constructing a new science academic facility at a cost of $147 million. And whereas, MTSU will be required to provide 25 percent of the first $75 million in construction cost, with the state providing funds for any amounts above $75 million. And whereas, with total projects cost of more than $140 million, and anticipated construction cost expected to be $120 million to $123 million, the MTSU Science Building is the largest construction project ever undertaken by the state. And whereas, as part of the funding, MTSU is required to provide $18,750,000 toward the total construction. And whereas, Rutherford County recognizes the great benefit of MTSU upon the local community and the entire state, and proposes to contribute $100,000 toward the construction of the new science building. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that a contribution of $100,000 be appropriated from the restricted-for-capital projects account, the development tax, to Middle Tennessee State University for the construction of a new science academic facility, to benefit the general welfare of the residents of Rutherford County, and that the general fund be amended as follows. Other social, cultural, and recreation, from restricted-for-capital projects, $100,000, to contributions, $100,000. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Cook and Commissioner Phillips, any discussion? Commissioner Baum.
Yes, I'd just like to disclose that I am an MTSU employee in the College of Business. However, I want to declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to represent my constituents and the citizens this body represents. I supported contributing this amount of money to Motlow several months ago, so I think it'd be consistent for me to support this tonight. And I want to make one comment about the funding mechanism for this. The Budget Committee is recommending that we get this money from our account that's restricted for capital projects. There's $1.2 million in that account right now, and that money, since it's restricted for capital projects, can't be spent on things like salaries for employees or gasoline for our vehicles. Instead, it is specifically earmarked to be used for the best capital projects in the county, and I think this one for MTSU is certainly a good one. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question. When I read the motion, it says it's a one-time gift of $100,000, and then Commissioner Ely mentioned an understanding that we would reconsider it, and I wanted to make sure that the understanding wasn't that we're going to contribute the $1 million to this, because we don't have a $1 million. I don't mind supporting the project, I think it's something that we need to do, but a million dollars is over our budget.
No, you're exactly right, Mr. Stevens. She said that the level of contribution will be considered at a later time, okay? So we've made no commitment. We cannot make another commitment beyond this one at this point in time. Any other discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, two no, motion passes.
Item K2F, A Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Klein-Sweeney Associates for Architect Engineering Services for the Reconstruction of Elam Road Fire Station. Whereas, on May 31, 2012, a fire damaged Fire Station Number 3, located at 5500 Elam Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and destroyed equipment being housed there. And whereas, it is being proposed to reconstruct the fire station and to enter into an agreement with Klein-Sweeney Associates for a cost not to exceed $17,000 for architect and engineering services, to complete adequate drawings and specifications as required, to get competitive bids to repair and replace fire damage to the fire station, and additionally, to upgrade as required to meet present building code requirements. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Klein-Sweeney Associates, a copy of the same being attached here too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for a cost not to exceed $17,000 for architect and engineering services, to reconstruct Fire Station Number 3, located at 5500 Elam Road, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jernigan, Commissioner Young.
We didn't get a chance to talk about this in property management, and this is something that's got to get done. One concern I have with, I went out there and looked at the station. My personal opinion, you're probably going to have to doze the whole thing down and start over. I'm not an architect or engineer or contractor, but it might be cheaper to do that, and I just don't want to spend $17,000 on something, and then three months later, the bids go out, and we can't afford it, and it's cheaper to build a new building than fix the one we got. And I just, that's something that, if we need to doze it down and build a new building, that's what we got to do, but, you know, $17,000 for engineering fees, and then have to turn around to pay engineering fees to have a new building drawn, you know, that's some stuff we need to think about and really look at, and I don't know if that would never discussed. I mean, I'm going to vote for it, because we got to do something. It's getting winter time, but, you know, think about that here and down the road, when we got to vote to spend money on actually fixing it when the bids come out. If the bid's $300,000 or $250,000 to fix it, it's probably cheaper to build a new building. So, that's all I got.
Point well taken. I mean, our preliminary estimates are probably, are under $150,000, but, you know, we don't know for sure, just as you said. Any other discussion? Ms. Cook.
What about insurance? Was there insurance on it?
Well, we have a $100,000 deductible, and their estimate on the repair, to put the building back in the condition that it was prior to the fire, is about $65,000, so... But we think we have to spend some more money past that. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Okay. What does this clock up here say?
6:28.
It says 6:28, so that doesn't give us hardly enough time. I can state that there's no Health and Education Committee report, there's no Property Management Committee report, and no Public Safety Committee report. With that being said, I think it would be appropriate for us to then start the public hearings. We do have two of those tonight, so we will start with the first one. It's a rezoning and conditional use permit, Request Number 12-A012. G and B Partnership, located on West Jefferson Pike, and the existing zoning is R15. The requested zoning is industrial, requested conditional use permit for light and heavy industrial activities, transport and warehousing, general retail trade and transient accommodations, and food services, on a site of approximately 187 acres. So Mr. Demossi will give us an update.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first piece of property is located at the interchange of State Route 840 and Jefferson Pike. The applicant's proposing to rezone this land for potential industrial uses. A primary use would be potentially manufacturing, transportation, warehousing, with the possibility also of some convenience commercial as well. The applicant did state there would be nothing like any scrap operations, resource production or extraction, or landfills. The property in question is vacant, there are no previous zoning requests for this property. You'll notice on the map that there's a portion of the property, about 18 acres, that was cut off by State Route 840 when it was constructed. That 18 acres is not part of this request, it's really just the main tract. There's also, you see a small cutout of the parcel right in the middle of the track, kind of toward the front. It's a small cemetery, it's a Hickory Grove Cemetery, you'll see, it's about a half acre track in size. The access easement will have to be maintained with whatever development is proposed for this. Now, the Jefferson Pike is on the state's long-range transportation plan. The Nashville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization does have funds for right-of-way acquisition for this project, scheduled for fiscal year 2013. The plan is to widen West Jefferson Pike to a five-lane cross-section from Nissan Drive to State Route 840, and also to improve the road geometry. And there's some information in your packets for that information as well. This area is also served by Smyrna Utilities. According to their Smyrna Utility Department, there's currently a 12-inch water line that runs along West Jefferson Pike, from the bridge over the Stones River to this property. Before that point, it narrows down to a 6-inch water line, but the entire line is scheduled to be shifted and upgraded to a 24-inch when the widening of West Jefferson Pike occurs. There have been discussions also about potentially extending sewer from Smyrna to this property. The applicant has indicated that the project may be served by sewer extension if... or may utilize the soils on the property for septic field lines at this point, but if they do extend sewer to it from the town of Smyrna, the town of Smyrna would more likely annex the property. After the public hearing at the Planning Commission, they did recommend approval with conditions. You'll see those located on your agenda packets. If this property is rezoned tonight, staff anticipates that when the new zoning ordinance takes effect, and the new zoning map, that we'd recommend this to be in the Employment and Activity Center District, or what's called the EAC District, where a lot of these uses would be permitted by rights, or at least these kind of uses being foreseen for that district. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Want to have any questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? Okay, Mr. Demossi, then, thank you very much. With that being said, we're going to declare this request, number 12-A012, open for a public hearing. And if there are those present that wish to speak for or against this particular project, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments and statements to us. Mr. Schroeder?
My name is John Stephen Schroeder. I live at 676 Cottenfield Lane in Commissioner Farley's district. I have no specific objection to this issue, other than the fact that I want to know how fire protection is going to be provided. Do the plat drawings specifically identify that water is going to be provided not only for drinking and cleaning and other issues like that, and also for fire protection? We've recently been notified that CUD has been out and about changing the tops of some of these fire hydrants, so that not only have they changed the designation of the fire hydrant to black, but they've also fixed it up so that the volunteer fire departments cannot connect to those fire hydrants. If we're going to be approving new development in this county, I think that there should be a reasonable expectation for people who are doing the development and buying that property that they should have fire protection. And I would like to have it specifically identified on the drawings that CUD will provide water service for fire protection. Thank you.
Mr. Schroeder? Who else would like to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I don't see anyone rising. I don't want to be too quick here. There being no one else that wishes to speak for or against, then, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I've had nothing but positive things related to me about this proposal. And to answer Mr. Schroeder's thing, that Smyrna serves that. There's a 12-inch line there already, which is a lot of water, and they're going to upgrade it to 24 when the road is widened, and that's on a short, the fast track, I think, to get that section from Nissan out. So that'll be done before any development is, amount of anything is done there. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve with contingent staff comments.
And Commissioner Black? Motion to approve with the conditions outlined that you see there in your document, those two conditions. Any other discussion or questions? Excuse me, Commissioner P.
Was there any question during the hearings that you had in planning on whether they would donate the right-of-way to the state for this new road that's proposed to go through? I know we've done that in the past.
That is the condition number one, but Mr. Demossi might can answer that more clearly.
Well, and actually, Mayor, you just, you pretty much answered the question. That is one of the conditions of approval, sir. Yes.
Any other questions? All right, all of you in favor of that motion, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is unanimous, then. Number two request is rezoning and conditional use permit request 12-A013 by Mr. Jamie Reed, located at 4024 Barfield Crescent Road. The existing zoning is R-15, and the requested zoning is agricultural services, requested conditional use permit for agricultural paint sales on about a 54-acre tract. Mr. Demossi?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. This is the property, the site that was the site of the old Womack Horse Stables that operated on the property for a number of years. The current owner and applicant's proposing to continue to use the existing horse stables on the property, as well as adding a horse arena. Most of the construction involved with the agricultural portions of the property have already begun, which is consistent with how we handle agricultural uses in the county. There is a small commercial portion of this application, which is a small showroom, which would be used for the sale of agricultural paint. The showroom will display the paint options and allow for limited retail sales. Most of the sales would require a direct shipment from the factory, and the factory would not, they would not be manufacturing the paint at this location. The reason predominantly for this application that you have before you is because of this small commercial element with this paint sales that we're speaking of right now. Staff did recommend approval of this to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission also recommended approval of this. We believe, as well the Planning Commission did, that the project was consistent with the policies found in the comprehensive plan. If the new ordinance is, when it's adopted, we would anticipate that this would be classified as an agricultural sales and service, which is allowed as a special exception in the agricultural residential zone, which is what we'd recommend for that. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Want to have any questions or Mr. Demossi? Okay, if there are no questions, then, we're ready for the public hearing. So we're going to declare the public hearing open with respect to this request, number 12-A013. And if there are those present that wish to speak for or against this project, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your statements. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Mr. Schroeder?
Commissioners, my name is John Stephen Schroeder. I live at 676 Cottenfield Lane in Commissioner Farley's district. And again, I would like to make sure that, or ask Mr. Demossi, to please point out that fire protection will be provided for this new development. We need to, again, CUD has been changing fire plugs, and we need to make sure that fire protection's provided. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there others that wish to speak? Is there anyone else? I see one gentleman, Mr. Harney.
My name is John Harney. I live at 6748 West Gum Road, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. To answer Mr. Schroeder's question, it's my understanding they are adding a fire hydrant at the junction of Webb Road and Barfield Road, which is basically across the street from this property. The use is generally not changing. The small use of the commercial portion of this for paint sales is a very small, approximately about a 2,000-foot building is certainly not a large component of this property. The main use of the property is not changing. It's been agricultural, horse-related, and will stay that way. Be glad to answer any questions, though.
Okay, thank you, then, Mr. Harney.
Thank you.
And Mr., let me see if anyone else wishes to speak, Mr. Schroeder, and then you can come back if you choose. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this project? If I don't see anyone else speaking, Mr. Schroeder wanted to maybe make another comment. I will allow that.
Really nice that they've got a fire hydrant out there. However, we also know that there are people that live in this county who have seen fire hydrants where the tops have changed. And I would like to know whether or not CUD is legally bound to provide water at those fire hydrants for the fire protection for this development. Thank you.
Mr. Schroeder? Anyone else wishing to speak? There being no one else rising to speak, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Farley?
Before this thing come about, I actually met with Mr. Harney and Jamie Reed, and I looked at the plans that they've submitted. It is adequate, the hydrants they're going to be putting in is going to be adequate fire protection for this, this area. Fire protection is very near to my heart. So I make a motion that we approve this with the staff comments.
Second, Commissioner Phillips? Any discussion or question from anyone else? If not, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, we're ready for a report from the Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Phillips?
Resolution to approve a speed limit of 25 miles per hour for Laurel Grove Court and 40 miles per hour for Weeks Road. Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas TCA 55-8-153 authorizes the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any road being maintained by Rutherford County, and authorizes it to erect appropriate signs. And whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended and requested the following speed limits with appropriate signage designated county roads. Laurel Grove Court, 25 miles per hour. Weeks Road, 40 miles per hour. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limits be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of these county roads and persons traveling thereon. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. That the maximum speed limits being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8-153 are as follows. Laurel Grove Court, 25 miles per hour. Weeks Road, 40 miles per hour. Resolve this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussions? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, could I be enlightened as to where Laurel Grove Court is? And when it says it's a court, does that mean it's a cul-de-sac?
I don't have that information. Does anyone, Mr. Jernigan is not sitting at his seat, and he could have told us, I imagine. Does anyone have an answer to that question? I don't know where Laurel Court is myself. Mr. Schaefer, we're unable to answer that question for you. It must be a very short, small street, because they, 25 miles per hour is a recommendation.
Well, I'm just thinking, if it's a cul-de-sac, which to me a court is, the 25 miles an hour is pretty fast in a cul-de-sac.
Must be a number higher than that now. But anyway, in any event, that's a recommendation from the sheriff's office and from our road board. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. I think I got a second, didn't I?
Yes, Turner.
Mr. Turner, correct. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, now, we're ready for, Mr. Demossi's going to give us a brief update to the joint meeting that we had a few weeks ago on the, with the Planning Commission regarding our zoning resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I just want to call everyone's attention to the handout that I provided prior to the meeting. It's got a couple of large flow charts on it and some attached documents. As you recall, on September 17, we had a joint meeting with the members of the Planning Commission and you with the Board of Commissioners to discuss the draft of the zoning ordinance and also the zoning map, which will be coming up for a public hearing here next month, November 15, in this very room that we're in right now at 6:30 PM. Of course, you call, we've distributed a copy of this to everybody, as well as a smaller copy of the map, and I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it and found it very enthralling. But we talked about a number of issues at the, at the meeting. I just kind of wanted to go over just a few of them. And if I've missed any, I apologize. Feel free, please, to remind me of such, and I'll respond to those. But some of the issues that got the most response had to do with fire protection, which we heard some comments from tonight. One of the questions being how adequate water service was being determined by whom. In response to that, and I'll just kind of go over the handout that I have here on that first page. Adequate water service we're proposing to be determined by the water provider for whatever project might be under consideration. Specific standards were not included in the zoning ordinance at the request of representatives from Consolidated Utility District. Staff, we agreed and also felt that it was more appropriate for water service officials to determine what constitutes adequate water service and fire protection than to have specific standards listed in the zoning ordinance, because there are a number of factors that go into that. I will also say that the zoning ordinance draft that we have also does make provision for fire protection for non-residential uses in all residential districts, as well as all the uses in non-residential districts, you know, your commercial districts, office, industrial, those kind of districts. Basically, in the event the water provider determines that a water line cannot support a fire hydrant, fire sprinkler systems must be installed in accordance with all applicable building codes, including NFPA 13D. There are also similar requirements currently in our subdivision regulations for new major subdivisions, and these requirements will also be included in the revised draft that we'll have of the subdivision regulations here, hopefully in the next month or so. Another question had to do with mobile home.
Commissioner Farley?
Before he gets to mobile home part and leaves the fire protection part, I want to say something. I have a concern of what was just stated, not with, not with you, Doug, but with the language here.
Sure, yes, sir.
Specific standards were not included in the zoning ordinance at the request of Representatives from Consolidated Utility District. Staff agrees and feels it is more appropriate for water service officials to determine that what constitutes adequate water service. You know, really and truly, fire officials should be involved in that as well, because it is fire protection.
Yes, sir. And I neglected to say in that, in that meeting, when we were discussing some of these issues, we also had the county's fire chief involved with that as well. And I apologize, I neglected to put that in here.
Is it going to be in, in the ordinance that, that the fires official or the fire representative is involved?
It's not in the ordinance as such that they're involved, but they will be involved. And he could flesh out a little bit more about what is in the ordinance and what's in the subdivision regs. The subdivision regs specifically spell out the flow of water, and I'm not, you understand that better than I do, but it spells out specifically what those requirements are to have a fire hydrant placed, and they're required in your new subdivisions.
But see, the problem, where the problem lies is, is there's, there's no standard right now that we've got for adequate fire protect, fire flow. We don't have anything adopted right now.
Except in your subregs, it's in there.
In the subdivision regulation, it is, it is more specific about flow.
What's the, what's the fire flow requirement now? Minimum fire flow?
It's 500 gallons.
500 gallons per minute for one hour.
A 500 gallon per minute is a red top hydrant. That's where the problem lies. A $500, a 500 gallon per minute red top hydrant is, it's a red top hydrant.
But it's got to be more than that.
Right, it's, that's the minimum. That doesn't mean it has to be, it has to be at least that.
They design a subdivision and have that minimum, that's minimum standard. If they design a subdivision that has that, at least the 500 gallon per minute minimum, it qualifies, right?
Without having to use sprinkler systems in the homes, yes, sir, it would. I mean, and the way that the subdivision regulations are worded basically is if it meets the fire flows and whatnot, and I just don't have them all around the top of my head right here, although I'm not, let me see if it's in my subdivision.
A water line will be deficient if it does not conform to that, including residual pressure of 20 pounds per square inch.
But if we have one that's, that's, that's at least 500 gallons, at 500 gallons, it's going to be, it's going to meet the requirement, and then it's going to be inadequate fire protection.
And I'm just, again, I'm just saying, and we understand that there may be some tweaks that need to be, especially in the subdivision regulations. I mean, whatever is deemed to be adequate fire protection, we can certainly update that. And again, even within the zoning regulations, once this is approved, we can go back and tweak whatever needs to be tweaked, because, I mean, quite frankly, what's in here now probably goes above and beyond even what we currently have in the zoning.
And I know, I know we haven't approved anything yet, and we're going through the process and stuff like that. I just want to.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to keep speaking.
Yes, and I, and we're well, very, and I hope you do, and we're very well aware.
We're well aware, I'll keep speaking.
And I know for some reason it just slips by. You'll remind me of that, so.
I will.
But no, no, we're well aware that that needs to, to be something that needs to be added in here. Yes, sir.
Commissioner P.
Got a few too many firemen hanging around here. But a question I've got, along with the regs here, was say that they do exactly what they've already done. We approve a subdivision, it's got red top hydrants in there, then they decide, well, we're going to lower it now that we've already got this subdivision in, they black top paint those, lower the pressure, or then are we going to require them to go in and put sprinklers in? I think that's going to have to be addressed if these people are going to continue to lower our water pressure in subdivisions they've approved and signed off on for minimum hydrant flows. They should not be doing that.
And that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner P, and I don't necessarily have an answer to that at this very moment. You know, when, when a subdivision is approved and signed off on, and we start issuing permits, and we do that with the understanding that the protection is there, especially if their representatives sign off on the plat, you know, if that pressure is reduced at that point, I do believe you're correct, that's something that will need to be addressed. Now, I will say that, that does not, that situation really isn't addressed in here currently, nor is it in our existing rig. I agree. Yes, sir.
I will say this now, sit down, but the, there was Rachel's place out there in Barfield. CUD signed off on. CUD signed off on this. Okay? The fire department went out there flowing hydrants, and I got a call from, from Matt at the time when he was out there, and that's when we found out there was no, no water. That's when we had to stop. They, they had to either build with a sprinkler system in it, or they couldn't build a house, you know, due to that. They're signing, nothing against CUD, they're good people over there, you know, but we got, and we got to have drinking water and we also got to have fire protection. If this county is going to grow like it should, we've got to have the adequate fire protection to protect the citizens of this county. You know, there's counties that are smaller than us, are ahead of us on the, on this very issue, and we've got to fix it.
I agree. Yes, sir.
Certainly agree, and we will fix it. We will change these subdivision regs to say exactly what the fire people say they should say. Miss, Commissioner Allen.
Doug, refresh my memory, but it seems like somebody spoke up, and I want to say it was Craig Lynch, since he serves on CUD's board, and I want to say that he made the comment to the effect of, and please correct me if I'm remembering this wrong, that CUD's purpose is to provide clean drinking water, and that's their ultimate goal, and they just happen to also provide fire protection where they can.
I believe you're, that, that's what I recollect with that statement as well. Yes, ma'am.
But in any event, it's our responsibility, incumbent upon us to be sure, if we're going to approve a subdivision, that the water's there. We can't make CUD put it in, but it must be there, or else they have to put in a sprinkler system. That's the way we've got this drafted, the way it's already written in the subdivision regs. Excuse me, Commissioner P.
When I first joined the commission, I was on planning, and part of the reason I ran for commissioner, volunteer firefighter, and I got tired of going around to subdivisions and asking people to give us money so we could put a hydrant in. And along with work with the other twenty-one commissioners there, we got the regulations changed so that we're required the minimum flow fire hydrants in all subdivisions before they could be approved. Now, to address your question a minute ago, yes, their stated objective is to provide clean, pure water. But if you go look at legislation and some of the judicial rulings that have happened all over the United States with some of these water suppliers, they have found that they have been liable where there was not adequate fire flow, and that has to be a consideration, or they would be liable. You can go back and look at case law in many of the states, and they, there's many departments like CUD that ended up liable for not having adequate fire flow. So they're going to have to look at both of them. And two, as our mayor stated, it's up to us to make sure that we've got adequate fire flow in these subdivisions. If we make that a regulation, it's going to have to happen, and I, I think it, you know, the buck may stop right here. I think that's what we need to make happen.
Any other discussion to see? Mr. Demosi, you're just getting started, good.
Yes, sir, just a, a couple more, just issues that were brought up at that meeting. One had to do with mobile homes and how mobile homes are proposed to be regulated in our new ordinance. According to Tennessee Code Annotated, localities cannot use zoning or land use planning restrictions or regulations to exclude the placement of a residential dwelling on land designated for residential use solely because the dwelling is partially or completely constructed in a manufacturing facility. Now, this is directly from TCA. Basically, what they're talking about is manufactured housing. Now, that being said, what we would consider a mobile home or like a single wide was not, would not fall into that category and is not preempted by that particular provision. Mobile homes, again, what we would call a single wide, are permitted by right in residential zones only if there is a minimum lot size of five acres, and that's currently how it's worded in our current zoning resolution. Otherwise, they have to ask for a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, similar to what they have to do today. Mobile homes as accessory dwelling units, and we talked a little bit about that at the meeting as well, they're not permitted by right, and they have to also be granted by a special acceptance, excuse me, special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's also some concerns and questions about accessory structures, specifically if the new regulations would allow someone on a subdivision lot to construct a second dwelling unit on the property. The draft zoning ordinance does make provision, as does our current zoning resolution, that a second principal dwelling unit on property is permitted if they have at least fifteen acres. Besides that, the only way for the second dwelling unit to be added to the property of a single-family residentially zoned property is with approval, what's what's called an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU. ADUs on properties of less than one acre, and Commissioner Farley, if I remember correctly, you had the, the concern about this, ADUs on properties less than one acres in, in size can only be approved with a special exception through the Board of Zoning Appeals, and detached accessory dwelling units have to meet all the size and lot coverage requirements, and also cannot be larger than the principal dwelling unit. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Now, one of the other things, and this will require just a little bit more discussion, has to do with the zoning process, what the new process will look like as opposed to the old one currently in effect. Now, and I'll, for this, I'll, I'll turn your attention to the two flow charts that you have in your handout, the two larger eleven-by-seventeen sheets. You'll notice the first one's entitled Current Regulations, and the second one's entitled Proposed Regulations. I'll just give a quick overview of the current regulations, and just to let you know, what you're seeing here is a very simplistic explanation of how this works. I could get a whole lot more involved in this tonight and with this flow chart than you probably would ever want me to. But generally, what happens is a development application is made to planning staff. Now, you see at the, at the top there, it's the start of the process. Then it goes down, it says the planning director decides on which CUP, conditional use permit process, using the guidelines in Article Six of the zoning resolution, our existing resolution. I've also included an example on the second, beginning on the second of the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, it's called Example of Current Process. Under step two, you'll see, these are the guidelines that the zoning ordinance currently lists out as far as what constitutes a type-one procedure, a type-two, and a type-three. Based on those standards, which are pretty subjective, the planning director has to make a decision as to which way it's going to go. It's either going to go type-one conditional use permit, which is administrative action, it'll either go to type-two conditional use permit, which is to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or type-three conditional use permit, which are typically what you see for rezonings like you saw tonight, and those go through the Planning Commission for recommendation and to the Board of Commissioners. But you see, everything really hinges on the decision that the planning director makes based on the information that's presented to them at that time. And you'll see kind of from there, depending on which process you take, you kind of see how the process goes forward. Now, compare that with the second flow chart under the Proposed Regulations. Again, at the very top, you'll see a development application is made to planning staff. Rather than the planning director at that point trying to make a subjective determination as to what route a particular application will take, the first thing that you do is you look at the land use, how it's classified in Appendix C of the new zoning document, and then determine which zones it's approved in, in Appendix B, or what zones it's allowed in under Appendix B. And those are rules that are adopted by you as the commission about what is considered, what is allowed by right, what is allowed by special exception, and what is allowed by rezoning only. So there really is no subjectivity at that point. Somebody comes in, says, I want to do this activity in this zone. I pull this out, I look at it, and I say, okay, you have to follow this route. It takes it out of my hands entirely, and it puts it pretty much in the rules and regulations that are adopted here at the Board of Commissioners level. And again, from there, you'll see, if it's just not allowed at all, if it's an N not allowed, the process ends unless the property is rezoned. From that point, then there's a rezoning application made, and it goes through the same channels as tonight, basically, you would make the final determination on any rezoning applications. The examples that I placed in the handout, the example of the current process and the proposed process, I took just a theoretical, someone wanted to do a bed and breakfast, submitted for planning review, and they follow, the steps that you see in these follow the flow charts as far as step one, step two, step three. But under the current process, again, the application's made to planning staff, the planning director decides on the conditional use permit using those guidelines that we talked about earlier, and after reviewing, again, this is hypothetical, but after reviewing the criteria and how similar applications have been processed in the past, a determination is made by the planning director as to the process. Factors that can be considered include the size of the property, size of the proposed structure, number of guest rooms, days, hours of operation, et cetera. Bed and breakfasts have been processed both by the Board of Zoning Appeals and by this body. So, again, at that point, it's really a subjective decision, which way does the planning director want it to go? So if we decided to make it go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you can see, again, how the rest of the process would, would unfold at that point. Again, compare that to the proposed process, the last of the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets. Development applications made to staff, somebody wants to do a bed and breakfast in the RM zone, for example, which is our equivalent of the R-15 under our current regulations. Bed and breakfasts are classified as permanent residential activities and are permitted by special exception in the RM zone. There's no subjectivity to that. At that point, I tell the applicant, you need to make a special application, special exception application, excuse me, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it goes through the process from that point. So I just kind of wanted to go through just some of those comments that were made. Again, if I've missed any, I apologize, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point, but I just wanted to give just a quick overview of some of the things we talked about at the meeting, and again, just to remind the commissioners that the meeting for the public hearing on November the fifteenth before you has been advertised in both the Murfreesboro Post and the Daily News Journal. Both ads ran in this past Sunday's paper. And we also have it on our website, and we also have some slides running on Channel Nineteen, our Rutherford County cable, Channel Nineteen, to that effect as well. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. P.
Doug, since you're covering the things that y'all talked about in the meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but as I told you earlier, the question that I'm getting mostly from the folks out in my area, which is rural, a lot of farmland, is how are the zoning changes directly affecting the farmland and large farms out there? Would you go over that, please?
Yes, sir. Be more than happy to. Let me just flip to that section here, so. As you recall, the unincorporated area of the county, most of it, I mean, currently is all pretty much zoned R-15, over ninety percent of the land is zoned R-15. Under the proposed zoning draft, we kind of have it split half between RM, which is essentially the equivalent of the R-15 that we know today, and what's called RL, which is residential low density, where there will be a minimum density of one unit per acre, as opposed to three units an acre in the RM area. One of the provisions we put in our zoning, the zoning draft regarding that had to do with variable lot size and adequate infrastructure in the RL zone. Basically, even though you're in the RL zone and it calls for a minimum one acre per lot, if you have public sanitary sewer or a decentralized sewer system such as a step system with sufficient capacity, and you also have adequate water service, again, for domestic and fire protection, you are able to build that three units an acre, just like it were zoned RM or R-15. If you have adequate water, but only have soils enough for individual septic tanks, you can still build that one unit a half acre, it's one unit per twenty-two thousand square feet, which is roughly two units an acre. And in the event that water service is either not available or does not meet minimum requirements as determined by the water provider, then the sizes would be one unit per acre at that point. So the question, I think, had to do a lot with, you know, the farms, if they had a step system and had adequate water in the subdivision, could they still develop that three units an acre? The answer is yes, and it would not require any kind of a rezoning that would come before you. It would just be, this provision would allow it by right. Did that answer the question, Mr. P? Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. Demosi? Okay, so this will be on your agenda for a public hearing next commission meeting. Thank you, Mr. Demosi. We're ready for the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Coggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Item K-7A, Resolution to amend the Commissioner's Handbook regarding the time limit for comments at public hearings. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires to amend Rule One, Paragraph L, Public of the Commissioner's Handbook, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rule One, Paragraph L, Public be amended by deleting the second sentence and adding the following language at the end of said rule, L, Public. Also, for a scheduled public hearing, any person may address the commission during the hearing. In all cases, the commission may set a limit on the period of time a person is allowed to speak. If the commission does not do so, the chairman shall have the authority to limit the speaker to a reasonable time. Resolved this eleventh day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Discussion. Commissioner Jordan.
We had a pretty good discussion in steering on this, on this rule, and the further away we got from the discussion during the ensuing couple of weeks here. As I understand it, Commissioner Coggan, on November fifteenth, when we meet again in this room, we're going to have a public hearing on something, and we may have ten of them. We, we don't have any idea. But it's, as I understand it, I want you, somebody correct me, before we start, if we want a limit, anybody in this room wants a limit on discussion, we're going to have to have a motion and vote on that. Is that correct? That applies to that? Well, I would assume it would apply to the, the entire, every public hearing for that evening, because it would be unfair to give one person three minutes and then the next public hearing four minutes and so forth. So I would assume that's not in here, and that kind of troubles me just, just a little bit. There's really, there's really more than that. I, if, if we don't do that, and I'm not saying we should or should not, but if we do not do that, then we leave it up to the mayor, which is fine with me in most cases, but he also is going to have to then decide what is a reasonable time for each speaker or for each public hearing, or for the whole, every public hearing for one entire evening. And the further away we got from voting this in, and I voted for it as well, and we had considerable, really good discussion, the weaker I thought it was. And I, I don't know what to do about it. We have, we have three minutes in the public comment period, which seems to work very well. Now, the public hearing part doesn't, as we all know, doesn't always work that well. Now, if everybody were as brief and concise as Mr. Schroeder back here, we wouldn't have any problem. He didn't give us a whole bunch of redundant, never-ending information. He gave us his opinion, something we needed to be concerned about, and he was done. And he did it actually twice, in two different public hearings, and he was done, and I appreciate that. But that doesn't happen all the time, does it? And the, the, the time limit, the, the whole thing troubles me, and I, I tell you what, I think we can do a better job than this, and I'm going to do something that I never do, I don't guess. I'm going to vote against this, and I'm a member of steering, and I'm going to ask the other six of you on steering to forgive me, and I, I think we can do better. But if it passes, and we, we can see how it works on November fifteenth. But remember, and we have some recent examples of this, don't we? If we don't, if we don't set a limit, then we leave it up to, to probably the fairest mayor in the state of Tennessee to decide each public hearing, which is, I think, really a little unfair to him. So I'm, I'm, I think we can do better than this, and, and I'm, I'm going to vote against this, but you, it, it may work. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. And I'll just say this, I think that this resolution and, and this change to our, our rules is to try and be more fair for the larger public hearings that we do have, because with no limit or no limit to potentially be set for those larger public, there could be possibly people who don't get to speak or don't feel like they're being heard because they may be at the end of the line and somebody spoke for forty-five minutes before they had, you know, three minutes to speak. So it's more of a, and it's not, you know, we talked about this in steering there, this is probably not the best answer, but neither is setting a hard, fast three minutes when somebody might need ten minutes who's representing a group of people to explain their case. So this gives the commission and the mayor, the chairman, some leeway to, and some discretionary decision-making.
Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Coggan. I, I tend to agree with what Mr. Jordan just said. Part of my concern with that is I, I don't want the, the public to get to the point where we, they think even indirectly that we're limiting their right to speak their mind, and that's, I, I don't want that to happen. I was sharing with Commissioner Sandlin a second ago, another thing, far-fetched as it might be, that, that could potentially happen that I'm concerned about, is if I know somebody might be coming up to speak that's going to speak on a topic that I'm in favor of, there's nothing to stop me from saying, I give him five minutes to speak, and I know the guy behind him is against it and I don't want him speaking, to say, I only want this gentleman or this lady to have two minutes to speak. And that, that could potentially happen. Is that correct, Mr. Coggan? Just based on, I mean, I don't, I, I'm trying to cover everything here. Granted, it might be far-fetched, but I, I certainly, I'm inclined to vote against this just, there's just too many questions for me right now on, I don't want to limit the public's time on being able to speak on, and, and I can appreciate the fact that we don't want to put the mayor under any undue stress, and, and Mr. Jordan's right, a fair mayor on time limits for constituents and citizens of the county, but I'm just not comfortable enough right now to vote on this for me. But I'm just not comfortable enough right now to vote on this for me to be able to say, we're going to limit you, but we're not going to tell you how much time you're going to be limited to. We're not going to tell you if that's a group limit on everybody that speaks on this topic, you're going to be limited to three minutes, but on the next one, it might be five minutes. I think that's kind of what Mr. Jordan, forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, was hinting at, and just, just for me, and I, I just can't vote for this right now, and, and I'm going to make that public, that I'm just concerned about, even indirectly, our constituents feeling like that we're, we're kind of cutting them off at the legs and not being able to, to be given adequate, adequate time to speak on something that's obviously important enough, you know, for them to come up here to one of our meetings. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Farley?
I've been a steering committee member, and out of respect to Commissioner Jordan there, I think you were the one that brought it up, and I think, what we, what I think would be a good idea is let's, let's, let's bring it back to committee, and let's, let's talk about it a little more. I mean, since, you know, I'm not trying to throw you on the bus, for no means, Commissioner, but, I mean, he actually had the idea, he has reservations now. I, I understand those reservations, I understand Commissioner Turner's reservations. We've got to do something, but what that something is, you know, we may have a difference of opinion. Let's take it back to committee. I mean, that may be a, a, a way that we can come up with some kind of compromise and, and maybe get it right if it's wrong.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Our county attorney wasn't there at the, at the meeting. I'd like to ask Jim, one of the questions I had, are we setting precedence if we do exactly that? If we have one public hearing or one meeting and we say three minutes, and then something else is, is a little more difficult or trying, and we say five minutes on that one or something or whatever, are, are we setting precedence by, by doing this right here in a up or down or, you know, three minutes here, five minutes here or something, and, and instead of being fair across the board, or, or are we? That's what I'm asking.
Well, you, you would be setting precedent, but not something that would be legally binding on you. You have the right to vary your procedures and policies as you go forward. I think your goal ought to be, though, as you go forward and consider this, is to, to be consistent. Whatever you do, you want to have consistency, as Commissioner Turner pointed out. You don't want it based on the issue, you don't want to base it on those who are for it or against it. That would be very troubling legally from a due process standpoint. If you were to say, well, on this next issue, I move that the opponents have five minutes per person and the, those speaking in favor have three minutes or vice versa, that's a very inconsistent kind of policy. I would suggest to you, as you sent, if you send it back to steering, that you look at establishing a, a, at least for some period of time, it might be at the beginning of each commission year in September, that for the next year, you'll generally follow X minutes per person. Now, that's not to say that you're always bound, but that that's your policy and that you adhere to that. And, and, you know, you can review it, you could change it, but it ought to be something that the public could feel comfortable, that they could rely on when they come to a meeting, that that is your standard, and that that will be followed for at least some defined period of time. And I threw out a year, I'm not holding you to that, but that, that would be what you would want to do, is to provide consistency there. Having said that, I do, I do think that it is entirely appropriate to grant the chairperson of your commission, in effect, authority if you don't elect to establish some parameters. It's not unusual at all in Robert's Rules to allow a chairperson to exercise authority, not on a per-speaker basis, not necessarily on a per-issue basis, but I've seen it done that way, where the chair establishes at the beginning of a commit, at, at the beginning of a public hearing, that on this issue, we will allow each person to speak for X minutes. You know, it, obviously, there is some discretion if you're having a matter of 300 people in here that are speaking on something that is very important, that there be some constraints. By the same token, you don't want to have something that's a very presumably inconsequential nature, but you have two people get up here and speak for 45 minutes each, when you've got 300 people that want to be heard on something else. So I, I think it's a commendable to allow the chair to exercise, however you choose to do this, some potential input or impact on whatever rules or regulations you decide to adopt.
Right now, the applicant, you know, in a lot of situations, they start at the beginning, and so they have the open, or they have the floor to, to state their case, what the project's about, whatever it is, and then, then actually, the public hearing starts then. I mean, you're already in, officially into the public hearing when the applicant comes up and speaks, but they don't, they're not required in that timeframe or that time limit. It's just the ones for or against that, that follow under that timeframe, I'm assuming, if that's...
Not necessarily, again, that's, that's up to you.
Okay.
You're setting the rules and regulations by which these public hearings are conducted. They've got to be conducted according to due process, meaning they have to be fair, impartial, reasonable standards. But if you want to say that the applicant can speak for no more than what the opponent speaks for, you, you could establish that. Again, it's a matter of fairness, that all people are treated the same.
And right now, even if we set the standard at, say, three minutes per person on a public hearing or something, it could come up from the floor that this subdivision has a speaker for the subdivision, and I would like to make a motion that we allow them 20 minutes, whatever the case may, X amount of minutes more than the three minutes, to speak because they're speaking for this one subdivision, or this one area, or this one company or entity or whatever. That could still happen, correct?
Well, sure it could. You could do that, but again, be careful, and I'm not saying don't do it, but let's say you say, Mr. Smith out here is going to speak for the developer, and I'd be permitted to speak for the group representing all the developers for 20 minutes. Well, Mr. Smith sits down, but the nine others who are here want to use their three minutes. I don't think you can turn around and say, well, Mr. Smith just spoke for you, you can't talk, because you're speaking on the same thing he spoke on. I think then you've got a due process issue that you said, okay, 20 minutes for this one, but zero minutes for the other nine who are in favor? Again, slippery slope there. Consistency. If you want to say all applicants are permitted up to X minutes, that would probably work. And then if you want to say for anyone else speaking for or against, it'll be Y minutes, think you could do that, but you need to be consistent. I would hate to see you, I, just tell them, I would, I would, would not want to see you, if possible, get into a meeting-by-meeting basis for establishing how long you're going to speak on issues, and I certainly wouldn't want to see you do it on an issue-by-issue basis. Boy, that is very troublesome, not only legally, but from a public perception standpoint of what you're trying to communicate to people about you all being the judge and jury of how important something is. Importance is a relative matter, so provide some standards, but again, be consistent in what you're doing.
Mr. Coggan, the reason it came up, we, we didn't have anything in place.
Commissioner Jordan, Jordan, excuse me?
I wouldn't want to accept credit or get any blame. Certainly, I don't want any blame. Actually, this was Mr. Coggan, our chairman brought this up. He beat me to it by about 15 seconds. So, and I had on my list of things to do, and he evidently had on his list also. I'm, I'm very much, as I think all of you are, for the public comment and the public hearings, this is a people's building. We don't, we don't own the chairs we sit in. You know, we're, we're elected here by, by the people for a four-year term, and somebody else will, will be here next time, or the time after, or the time after that, and they'll have the same problems. And I, and I'm, I'm very much for the people being heard. It is, after all, them that, that we represent. And if, if somebody is speaking, and what Mr. Coke just said just a minute ago, about setting something up for a long, longer period of time than one meeting, also, it would be nice if the person sitting at home that has an issue that they want to comment on a public hearing, it would be nice if they knew before they walked in that door how long they're going to be able to talk. Am I going to get three minutes tonight, or four minutes, or five minutes, or what? I think it'd be nice in preparing remarks. Now, if they're representing a group, and, and we did talk about this in steering, we really explored this pretty well, I thought. I thought we did a pretty good job, I just don't like our finished product. But if, if you're representing a group, then, then that group can have two or three speakers, and if they had, if they, if they had a time limit, they can hand it off to the next person. We witness that all the time. And I'd, I'd also like to add, I think maybe, maybe it was Mr. Sandlin, I, I'm not sure, that they brought this up at steering, and I wanted to ask this question. On, on a point of order, which is used in here very rarely, but every once in a while, probably necessary, point of order, can we invoke that against a, a person that, on, in the public hearing? If they wander far afield, Mr. Attorney, can we, can we do that? I want them to talk, and I think we all do, but if the answer to that is yes, I wish you'd told me that two months ago, but, you know, since I didn't know that, but I would like to know that.
No, I, I think typically, points of order, I'd have to research it to give you a definitive answer. I think generally, points of order are probably for the body themselves, not for the public. The public is not the body, and so you probably could not invoke a point of order, but that's subject to me double-checking that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
On occasion, the chair has suggested to the speaker that they are wondering from where they need to go, and would they please wrap that up? So, I mean, I think the chair still will always have that prerogative to, to make that. We can't force it, but we can encourage proper discourse. Continue on. Cook?
I haven't seen very many public hearings that they couldn't get up and speak in three minutes and tell what they wanted. There is a lot of them that come in and they speak forever because they're before the camera, they get to be before the camera, and that's what they want, a lot of. So I think it depends on what the public hearing is all about, but I think they can say it in three minutes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Cook that three minutes, it should be plenty of time, and if somebody runs out of time on their three minutes, they can always come back at the end. Is that correct? Are we still going to allow them to do that, or is it a definitive three minutes and that's all they get?
I, I think that's a, again, a flexibility that the chair should be allowed to have, if he wants to let everybody, if it's a handful of folks here, and we want all of those to speak first, which I would suggest that would be the appropriate thing to do, and if somebody wants to respeak, we might. But if it's 100 people in here, you know, I might not do that.
Well, I would feel more comfortable if we had a certain time, just for what Mr. Coke was saying, for the due process, and so that everybody knows exactly what they're entitled to have. And I agree with Commissioner Farley that it might be better if we send this back, but if we could do an amendment tonight for a certain time, I don't know what that is, but I'd be more likely to support it if it was a set time.
Commissioner Farley?
Since there's a motion on the floor, I'd like to amend the motion and send it back to the steering committee for further study.
Second, was, who was that? Jeff Jordan? Any discussion on that? Okay, so we have a motion to amend the motion to send it back to the steering on the floor. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. I just want to suggest to the steering committee that someone needs to be able to put some specific recommendations on the table when we get there. And also remind you that this is in your handbook. You can change this handbook anytime you choose, you can change it on the floor if you so choose. So there's lots and lots of flexibility here. Commissioner Jordan?
I might recommend, and it was a mention a few minutes ago, at the last steering committee meeting, the county attorney wasn't there. If they're going to be dealing with this and might want some legal advice, they may request his presence, because that's steering's prerogative, but it might be better if he was there.
That would be great.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Coggan, you can continue, please.
Thank you, sir. Item K-7B, resolution to amend TCA 10-7-401 regarding Records Commission. Whereas the Rutherford County Records Commission has requested changes to TCA 10-7-401, changing judge to judge or designee of judge, and the addition of a representative from the County Technology Department to the Records Commission, and whereas said request is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county requests the Tennessee General Assembly amend the provisions of TCA 10-7-401, changing judge to judge or designee of judge, and add a representative from a county, from the County Technology Department to the Records Commission, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the legislative delegation for Rutherford County to sponsor and pass through the Tennessee General Assembly. Resolved this 11th day of October 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will yield K-7C to Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. The School Board and Road Board Zone Committee is on the agenda tonight, and really is not supposed to be, but let me give you a brief, brief update. We are, we've met for about six months, and the further we get into it, the more complicated this process seems to get, Commissioner Sandlin. And I'm sure you're probably aware of that, as you've kind of forewarned me as we were getting into this process. But we've looked at, actually, one map that looks really good, two that look pretty good. The maps themselves were pretty easy to come up with. It's the follow-up to the maps that we're struggling with right now, and that means how are we going to put the new map in place with some rotating election cycle that the School Board and the, and the Road Board both are on? So we're working through that process, and it's our intent to give you a recommendation without it being a recommendation. We want to show you what we're working on, what we're thinking about, and to get input from you and from the public at our November 15th meeting. At that meeting, we'll give you a couple of maps that you can take a look at, how it would affect the Road, Road Board and School Board members, the way it looks now, and the way it, it may be proposed, and then the election cycles and how it would affect those folks. That's what we'll do on November the 15th. Shouldn't take long to do it, and I hesitate to even put it on the agenda now with the public hearing that's scheduled for that, but, but maybe if, if you guys would prefer, we can put it off till December. There's, 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 there's nothing magical about timeframes or, or anything. Our next scheduled meeting is not until after our November 15th meeting, so we can have all of that information put together and, and presented at the December meeting, if that's what you guys prefer. It'll take a little while to, to walk through this, and what we want is to give you a visualization of what a new proposed map might look like, but also how it would affect those elected officials with those new maps, and what election cycles we may need to go through. So we want to give you some of that information, but it'll take a little while to do that, probably more time than maybe even I, as a commissioner, would want to spend with the public hearings that's in November. So with, with your blessings, we'll put that off until our December meeting, and that'll give us something, a joyous occasion, to look at new colored maps. So that's where we are. The, the committee has worked really hard and has looked at numerous different scenarios. Our, our main goal is not to present something that the committee itself is recommending as something that you adopt, but our goal is to give you something to look at as an option to what we have. Now, that doesn't mean that I, as a county commissioner, will vote for it, but what that means is this is the best option that we can come up with, and that's what we think you've given us a charge to do. So that's what we're going to do. And then where we go from there will kind of be up to you. So we'll disseminate that information, let you get, give us feedback, and also the general public, let them give us feedback, especially the elected officials that may be affected, School Board members and Road Board members, and then maybe at Jan, at our January meeting, as early as then, we'll present it as, as a recommendation that you guys can say yes or no to, okay? Any, any questions? Once again, we've been meeting for about six months, and I think we were given nine months to complete the task, so we'll still... months to complete the task, so we'll still be under that come January, and I think we'd take as long as we want to, as long as we do a thorough job in fulfilling the assignment that you guys have given us.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other business? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Allen, would you pass this down? And Commissioner Srinath, would you pass those down the back row there? I'd like to bring forth a motion and a resolution to amend our commissioner handbook tonight, and I've wanted to do this for several months now. It's kind of my attention that Mr. Spence, in the county clerk's office, he sends us this legislative digest every month. He has to print it and copy it, fold it, and stamp the envelopes, and address them, and seal them, not only for us, but for the county department heads and so forth. And I'd like to change that to where he can distribute that to us electronically, and that will save him a lot of time in his job, and it will also save the clerk's office money, and make that process more efficient. So, on the page that I distributed, on one side, it's just got a small little bit of print on it. I'm going to make a motion to add the following language to the first sentence in Rule 4, Section A, between the words "distribute" and "not," and those words are of a digest either by U.S. mail or electronically. So, if we would amend this tonight, the county clerk shall compose a digest of each meeting and distribute the digest either by U.S. mail or electronically, not later than five working days after the meeting. The digest shall be distributed as follows, and the handbook, as we have now, specifies which people are supposed to get that. We need to start pushing toward technology and, and using the email system that we have instead of printing all this paper and wasting our toner, and using the employees' time on things that they could do to make the office more efficient. So, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman, is to add the following language, the digest either by U.S. mail or electronically, after the words, or between the words "distribute" and "not" in Rule 4, Section A. That's my motion.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Now, Commissioner Farley?
This may be a good idea, but, you know, but really, though, Commissioner, I mean, I think these things need to come through the committee process. Not saying I'm against it. It, it sounds off the cuff here like a good idea, but I think we need to go through committee, is my only objection right now.
Commissioner P.
I'd like to make an amendment that we send this back to steering.
Second, Commissioner Black. Discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Stevens?
We're just adding like three or four words. There's nothing much to study. We're just making it to where she can send us our minutes by email, instead of having to send it by U.S. mail and use the postage and the paper and the toner and the employees' time that could be spent doing something different. I don't see any reason to delay. It's a very simple thing. We just want to make it to where they can send it to us, and we can accept it by email instead of having to use the other resources.
Mr. Young?
I agree with Commissioner Stevens on this. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven words. If it was something big, I agree with you, Commissioner Farley, 100%. But five minutes ago, the mayor just said, anytime we want to change our handbook, we can bring it on the floor whenever we so want. It doesn't have to go to the committee. He just said that five minutes ago. This is so simple, we're 21 adults in here. If we can't figure out those seven words make common sense, we shouldn't be up here anyway. So, let's just vote for it and get it over with tonight, and then the steering committee can focus on what Commissioner Jordan was working on, and, I mean, that just makes sense to me. So, that's all I got.
Mr. Jordan, were you rising?
Yes, sir, I was. This, if this is a good idea, and I tend to think that it probably is, it'll stand up to the, to the committee process without any problem. And any, any member, every member will have an opportunity to look at it, and it's, it's something that, it's certainly not an emergency, something that's got to be done tonight. We'll look at it in steering, and bring it back in November, and I think we'll be in good shape.
Let's see, Commissioner Schaefer?
I just think that maybe we ought to make a motion tonight sometime to change the name of this city from Murphysboro to Little Washington.
Okay, Commissioner Sandlin, I have to let everybody speak once, and then we'll come back. Commissioner Sandlin?
I did owe Commissioner over there. It'll stand up probably to the committee process, and that, that's the whole thing. We have a committee process, period. I'm sorry, some of you new commissioners may not understand that, know the committee process, but it's time to learn the committee process. Everything goes through the committee, a committee, everything. What the mayor said is you can change the handbook at any time we want to, but you've got to go through the committee process. That's what he said. You can look at the minutes when they come out electronically.
Anybody else want to speak? Mr. Farley's coming. We're on the second iteration now. Mr. Farley?
If we set, if, if we set a standard, consistency, what our attorney said, want to go. We're being inconsistent. If we're starting jumping committees, who's to say that somebody wants to come up here and just bring up, we want to spend a million dollars on something, and hey, that needs to come through the committee process and do due diligence on that work, is what needs to happen.
Another discussion. We have an amendment. Let's see, Mr. Stevens?
I'd like to take exception to what Commissioner Sandlin said, but everything does not have to go through a committee. The other business is therefore, if a commissioner wants to bring something forward that didn't have time to go to a committee, or who knows what reason, any commissioner's entitled to bring any resolution forward they want to under other business. I know the rules. You don't have to tell me what the rules are, Commissioner. So, I, I don't see any reason to delay on this. Like Commissioner Schaefer said, we're starting to make things complicated. This is not something we need to spend a lot of time studying. Do we want email? Do we want them to be able to email it to us, or do we want him to have to spend more time stuffing envelopes and printing envelopes and wasting stamps? I don't see what the big reason is to study it in the committee. Why can't we just vote no on the amendment to send it back to the committee and approve it tonight and be done with it?
Excuse me. Mr. Sandlin rose first, but I'll have to recognize him.
Commissioner Stevens has a great idea, and I think it will hold up through committee process, but we do have to go through the committee, and he just, he started off his comments by he's been working on this for months. I believe I did hear that. I want to read it electronically later, but I, I really think he said, and I believe he said, you've been working on it for months. So, that's what you said. But next month will be a great idea to go through this, bring it up full commission, and we'll send it through, and we'll save the county taxpayers lots of money by doing this.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Well, I've listened to this discussion, and, you know, it's an excellent discussion, and...
I hear you.
But I've been up here with two words has changed a paragraph, which took us into one of the biggest lawsuits maybe we ever had. But the reason I rise is that changing it to electronically would be all right, but do you, you probably need to survey all 21 commissioners and see if they have the capability of receiving it, you know, because I think, I think it may be a rule that each commissioner got to receive these, and if they do not have the capability of receiving them, you know, we may be jumping the gun. So, we may need to do a survey on that first, you know, before we decide to make this a part of our handbook procedure.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Farley, and we'll go with you one more, and that'd be...
I don't, I'm not a computer guru, but my question is to the clerk's office, do they have the capability? Because some of these minutes are quite lengthy. Do y'all have the computer capability in these electronically? Because the megabytes and all this other stuff, and some of these, is, is that a possibility?
They're only sending the digest, which is a two or three-page condensed version. The minutes themselves are not being sent to you even now, and they're not proposing to send.
Well, I understood it was, we wanted all the, the whole...
Just the digest is all we're discussing here. Commissioner P., I apologize, and this has gone on past your suggested, would you, would you, he called for the question. His second, do we have a second? Several people, Mr. Schaefer and Ms. Cook. All right, we have a call for question. All in favor of the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have an amendment on the floor to send this motion back to the steering committee. And we're ready to vote?
Yes.
Ma'am? That's what I'm going to do. Please record the votes. Not record the votes, please cast your votes. You understood what I meant, I'm sure. All right, record the votes, please.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change the vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
14 yes, 6 no. Motion passes.
That motion passed, and it's going to, this suggested amendment to our handbook will be sent back to the steering committee for their discussion. It'll be on the agenda at the next steering committee meeting. Any other business? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, I just feel obligated to mention something, because on the vote about the science building at MTSU, there were a couple people that didn't support it, and I just feel some things that I've been to recently I need to mention. One is I've heard from the head of the Chamber of Commerce that we've got enough open jobs in this county to make us have full employment. That's well, that'll be, it would be well less than 5%. The other is that there's a, a company that's out here near the interstate, near Salem Highway, just past the highway department in that area, that the company was wanting to expand 50 jobs, and they were going to put it here, till with what they already have, and till they found they could not find the qualified people. So, they went to one of their other plants. What I'm getting at is I took some time off today, and I meant Ms. Cook was up there, and I went to Bridgestone in Laverne, and it was Bridgestone and Motlow State had a open house concerning Mechatronics. And that, in a nutshell, what that is, it's a partnership that's coming out between industry in this county and Motlow, soon in Mechatronics. MTSU is coming out with a four-year degree of design engineering in Mechatronics. And these jobs right now, if you complete them at Motlow, if you complete the two-year program, they're paying $1,000 plus a week. They're doing a dual partnership with high schools. Warren County already has one. Oakland is just about ready to start up with it. And here's the neat thing about this. This is partnerships between education and businesses in this county, and so it helps us. It's not costing the county money unless they use one of the building rooms in the high school. And what it is, it's using computerized technologies with pneumatics, hydraulics, robotics, electronics, et cetera, and combining them together the way industry's going and what they're using. Because in this computer age, somebody's got to take care of that robot, or whatever, or the air that, that robot is using. And I just wanted to let y'all know that we are making strides in this county, and I think we ought to be very privileged, and especially when it starts with you've got high schools, technology centers, a two-year community college, and a four-year university that are all starting to partner, partner together with the rest of us and, with the business in this county. Thank you.
Any other business, any announcements?
One announcement.
Okay, and then Mr. Turner, let's let him go.
I'll go after you.
Go after Mr. Turner.
Mine was to, just real quick, thank you, Ms. Nolan. Mr. Chairman, just wanted to remind everybody here and all the citizens at home that with the recent census and some of the voting locations changing, with the presidential election coming up, make sure you check your voter ID card so you know that where you're going to vote, and you don't get to where you used to vote, and are concerned why your name's not on that roll, that you just take some 30 seconds to look at it, and then make sure you get to exercise your right to vote at the location that you're supposed to vote at. Thank you.
It's, early voting's got all kinds of schedule, and it's, it was posted in the paper. I don't know, but it's multiple days, and I don't know the beginning date. Mrs. Nolan has something she would like to say.
Yes, I've given you a document on your table. If you are still getting a paper check, please provide the finance department with your preferred direct deposit, either to your bank account or to one of the county's pay cards.
Hey, did you all see that document that she's provided on your desk there for you to properly fill out and submit and give back to the finance department? Any other announcements or business? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.